I'd like to call this regular city council meeting of July 27, 2015, to order. We would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call shows everybody is present. And we move on to approval of minutes.
I'll move.
July 13th, right?
Yeah, I'll move the minutes.
Second.
On page six, I've got a further discussion. Page six, about two-thirds of the way down, it says, "Planner doesn't decide what's going on," or going to go on there, council does. He stated, he asked for the, and then it should be an additional, the size of the building envelope for that next line. Just ask for the envelope. That's all I had thinking.
All right, I'll move it as amended.
Just a second. Okay, anybody else on, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approval of bills, which we do not have any to deal with, that's good. Now the approval of the agenda.
There's only one thing I would like to do. We have on here the, I'm trying to find what number it is again, number two, the resolution on trees. I spoke with DTE Energy Representative Michael Pachelsik this afternoon. They were unable to get anyone here from their vegetation management program. They would like to address the council at a public meeting in August. And so they wanted to know if it would be possible to table that resolution until they could come in front of the council.
I think it's appropriate.
Did they not cut this week?
They have not started cutting. They have put the trimming and removal on hold until they have had a chance to address the council.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Joe?
Well, my opinion is, yeah, it shows some good faith that they're willing to work with us, so I'm pleased to see that. As long as we have it in writing, which it sounds like that they're not going to do any cutting until after they address council. But my request would be that residents that are here today specifically to speak on this matter, that they have an option to, an opportunity to let them know, let the public know their opinion. So I don't know if we want to do that during, Mr. Mayor, I'll let you.
Do citizens' comments over there?
Public comments.
If it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay, thanks Glenn. I would've said that, but. Okay.
So I'm okay with that answer, question.
Okay.
Well, I'll move the agenda as amended then.
Support.
For discussion? On, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. And then we can move to public comment. Anybody wishes to speak on any issue not listed on the agenda? Step up to the microphone.
Make that known.
Carl Richards, 390 Lennox, good evening, people. I just wanted to inform you of something that I will be bringing up to Planning Commission later on in more detail, next time they meet. At this time, there are nine vacant storefronts in the downtown, and two other building businesses that are up for sale that still are operated. For example, the theater, okay? And another lady, business lady and myself worked on this for a while, and we wanted to let you know that, in our opinion, none of it is cause and effect of the closing of Sweetwater, and Sweetwater's in the list also. At least this time around, nothing that has anything to do with the Sweetwater. Okay, next item, I just wanted to let you know that I filled in the paperwork last week for write-in candidacy for council to stay off the ballot, except as a write-in at a later time. My reason for doing this, all right, and my intentions, is to stay out of the way and not interfere with any of the incumbents or the other list of fine candidates which are running this time around. And I want the public to have a proper selection. I'll be available for comments and one thing or another, but strictly as a write-in candidate, case of an extraordinary circumstance. And item number three, real quick here, if item number two is off the ballot, or off the agenda for tonight, can I say something about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where tree ordinance is concerned, having spent over 20 years in both ends of the industry, both ends of it, just let council know, okay, as I may say, I mentioned other years, you have enough standing timber and merchantable trees that you could easily have a four-man forestry division under your DPW building department, or building department, not necessarily the DPW. You easily have enough logs, which I never did get around to showing our city manager, some of them that have been laying around for a while, you could have, you could bring in your own, a portable sawmill under contract and cut up your own blocking for a period of, you know, at least a week every year. I don't think you have a concept of what you've got available with trees in your easements and on your own property, let alone a cemetery, a lot. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Carl.
I'd like to make a comment, that if you've signed up to be a write-in, you can't be on the Cable Commission.
I asked about that. Time clerk said he thought it was all right.
You can't be on a city.
Cable Commission is not functioning too well at this time.
It's not what drives the qualification.
We haven't met.
There's still, you're on the panel, I mean, you're still on the panel, so.
Okay, ask the lawyer, I don't know, Glenn, I don't have an answer legally. I believe I can still be on Cable Commission and be a write-in candidate and not a petition designated candidate, okay? Now, if I'm wrong, fine, we're wrong, you're right then, okay, but.
Did you get 25 signatures?
Didn't have to.
Okay, for a write-in, you don't have to do that.
No signatures necessary, no notary, I asked about it.
Okay, good.
Anybody else wish to speak?
You have to file.
Mr. Mayor?
Just make a quick comment, that would be, since this is not on the agenda for the tree ordinance, if there's anybody that wishes to speak from the public, this would be your opportunity. Yes, this would be the time.
I'm Diane Dunlap, I live in Oak Creek Village, Andover Creek.
In the street number?
1,000, I'm the very first house in the sub. In fact, I'm the entrance. Let's roll back to July 5th, when we had a big windstorm and a thunderstorm. All the wind was blowing around, my husband and I looked in the backyard. There were two of my trees that were arcing off of one of DTE's wires. Literally on fire. I called DTE and don't know which number to press for what. The only thing I can press is down power line. They obviously know from their computer that there's no down power line, but they can also see that this relay or whatever switch it is is not tripping. In the meantime, no one comes out. My husband goes out with a hose and sprays the top of the tree, the tree burnt down. I have a natural gas line that runs through my yard, and yes, I am on an easement, so had this tree fallen over, it would've blew up. Would've blew up my yard, would've blew up the neighbor's house. 24 hours later, a plainclothes woman with a badge shows up, no DTE sign, and says, "Where's the down power line?" We know there's no down power line. And I said, "Yeah, I understand that," but I didn't know who to call or what to do about the trees that were arcing in the backyard. Oh, we'll get somebody out there to cut them back. Now, if I can show you this, these are the trees in my yard. That tree on this side is the one that they cut back. You can pass this down if you guys need to.
Will they just, they top the, take the top off?
Yeah, they took at least 10 foot off, cut it down. Now, mind you, I started out when I bought my house 10 years ago with eight pine trees like that in my yard. To which the last three years, I'm sorry.
They won't hear you on television.
It's a needle cast disease. We've had to take out six of them in our yard. Which was not cheap, I had to have an arborist out, I've had them deeprooted, feed it, I've had them sprayed with diconazole, with antifungal. I've done everything I can in my power because, as Joe will tell you, this is within yards of my back, you know, feet of my back door. If it wasn't for those trees there, I've at least seen 20 accidents right at that little corner, whether they be fender benders or whatever, I've had at least two or three, those pine trees stopped cars from coming into my yard. They're the only barrier that I have of privacy, period. So when I came home and I did not receive anything from DTE talking about anything tree trimming, and there was a hanger on my door saying that they'd be out to trim the trees, I called them and I was like, "You already came out," and you, and they did that with two different trees in my yard, absolute hack job. And they said, "Oh, no, Mrs. Dunlap, we plan to take out all the trees in your yard." I'm $1,800 in just this year, just this last year, in a year's cycle of keeping these alive. They're finally coming back. And I don't want to lose the trees, they're the beautification. What was it, maybe five or six years ago, we lost all of our oak trees, maple trees to ash bor. So honestly, this is not an option for me, it really isn't. I will lose property value in my home, I will lose whatever privacy that I have. I mean, I grew up here, guys, I've been here 40 years, you know, I'm 44 years old, I've been here 40 years. And I have, there's the bus depot you guys moved on Griswold, I have to hear garbage trucks constantly, and it's just gotten worse. And now with construction on Griswold, hopefully that'll leave some of the traffic, but the traffic's anywhere between 45 and 65 miles an hour, and at least, one of South Lion's finest has somebody pulled over in front of my house at least twice a week. So if I can say anything to you, I beg you not to cut my trees down. If you have to cut my trees down, then I need to take whatever legal action it is that I have to take against DTE because it will ruin my yard. I have landscaping boulders in my yard that will be devastated. It'll cost me at least probably $5,000 or $6,000 just to recover, and I don't have it. I've spent it, just trying to keep these trees alive. And I just, I don't know, I feel like it's not right, it really isn't. I know that DT did this in Bloomfield Hills, Jeffrey Feiger filed a $54 million lawsuit that's in right now for the township of Bloomfield Hills. The only way that they would stop their cutting was Bloomfield Hills' city manager filed with the court an injunction to stop. And that's the only reason they've stopped. So I guess they're being cordial with us, but I want to have my input heard here today and let you guys know where I stand as a citizen, as somebody who grew up here, who, somebody who loves this place, somebody who came back here after college to raise my kids. I mean, we can't let them cut all our trees, we are a tree city, I remember when we were the horse capital. We're not that anymore, but I'd like to leave our trees intact, so thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
I've got a phone number here for DTE that speaks to exactly this circumstance. They're, they want to end up working with you, this is the people that you'll want to talk to.
Well, when I did talk to them, they have, they don't want to replace it with anything, they don't want to pay for a fence. They proceeded to tell me that because I'm on an easement, it is their property, not mine. I understand that, I mean, at least two or three times a year, somebody's digging up my yard because I am on the easement.
Well, if you'd like to talk to them, this is the number that you want to call.
I will call them, thank you so much.
Generally, we're not supposed to answer right now.
I'm sorry.
No, not you.
Thanks.
The council.
Yeah, we don't.
He wasn't part of you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Luke Voss, I also live in the Oak Creek subdivision, 999 Westbrook, so I'm right across the entranceway from Mrs. Dunlap, also kind of the entranceway there. And I just want to reiterate a lot of things she said and impress upon you, I think we need to be very careful with trusting DTE. Just for some of the miscommunication I feel like I've already had with them, just in my one conversation with them and what I've heard from other people, when you receive a flyer on your door that discusses tree trimming for power lines, that's understandable, I think. I think we can all understand that there might be branches in the way. However, when you then call the number on that flyer that they left, and the first thing that the gentleman says is they plan to clear cut down Nine Mile, well, that's drastically different than trimming of trees. I think that was the first thing, and luckily Mrs. Dunlap mentioned me, that they said the same thing to her, and that prompted me to call, I wasn't going to even call. I assumed that the flyer said they'll mark our trees, it'll be trimmed with a white dot, and they'll mark our trees to be cut down with a white ribbon. And the fact that there was nothing marked on my property, what would have been no more than four days prior to their scheduled start of cutting, I assume at that point that nothing drastic would be done. However, I'm glad I did call, and I'm glad that my wife and I were not able to discuss with Councilwoman Rizzi our concerns to bring this up. Because I do believe we need to take some steps in order to ensure that if they have to do this, they do do it properly. Because there are a lot of trees, some of them not in the greatest health, but they are our only block to Nine Mile Road in the house that my wife and I own. We've lost a tree just this year that we had to take down because it died. Luckily, we've been able to keep most of the other older mature trees currently. But if they were to come in and then just start trimming them, lopping off the tops, et cetera, that would change the value of our property, that would change our sightlines for when we sit on our deck, in our backyard, in our living room, the way our house is configured, so. The concern came when his description of what they planned to do was significantly and drastically different than what was handed out to myself, and I believe most of the residents that I've talked to that have gotten that same flyer. So I think that, more than anything, is what, you know, I would like to impress upon the council that. And I'm glad to hear that they have agreed to come speak in the August meeting and set this aside for now. That way we can make sure that everybody's on the same page and what needs to be done is done, but, but no more. Because it is easier for them to come in and take out more than they need to, most likely, instead of taking the time to make the proper decisions, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we can move on to old business. It's first reading of the amendment to the ordinance, Chapter 14, Animals, to allow for and to provide regulations on keeping of female chickens, hens.
Okay, at our June 8th meeting, Miki Giles approached the city council with a crest that the council consider amending the ordinance on keeping of chickens, hens in the city limits and residential areas. We were asked to have the city attorney and the planning consultant look at and draft an ordinance allowing for this activity and provide regulations. You have that ordinance, spoke to Councilman Waddell on Friday. He asked me also to put together a permit application, which you should have received via email on Friday as well, that was also sent out to the city attorney to review. He has not finished giving his total review, but this is up for you for first reading and first consideration this evening.
Did everybody get the letter from Ron and Beth Glatz prior to our last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so they're, they're very good at what they do as house appraisers, and so they've kind of made it clear that it has no impact economically on the value of your home. The one thing that I had seen missing in there was any kind of an appellate circumstance. I don't know if ZBA would be the right form or whatever, but if abutting neighbors have concerns or are just downright against the idea, it seems as though there should be some redress before something takes place. Or, or having some moderator, I guess, to determine whether or not their, their concerns are valid.
Mr. Mayor?
Tim?
Yes, Councilman Kivell, I've had discussions with the city administration and the planning consultant regarding whether we should have an approval process and involve, you know, seek resident or other public input on the issuance of a permit to keep chickens on a property. I'm not, I'm not convinced that that is a useful use of city resources, given the number of these that you might get, although I don't know what numbers you might get. I just don't know that you want to invest in the administration of a process over something that is fairly straightforward once you've set the parameters for whether you can or cannot do this. That was my initial thought, and that's why it's not in here. But if that's something that council would like to see, we certainly can go back and retool. We would need to evaluate what process that is, what board it goes, body it goes before, what are the parameters that you're looking at to determine, other than what we have in here? Is there anything else, other than just a public hearing type setting, where you could receive the input from neighbors or others?
Well, personally, I think when they make the application for the permit, it just as a variance for ZBA, the abutting properties are given notice that you've applied for a variance. If they have any concerns about it, they have the opportunity to go to the ZBA, make their pitch. So it seems as though this would be a great way to lay this out. Give the neighbors on abutting properties the opportunity to, to make themselves known, or their opinions known. If they're in opposition to it, no one's going to do it if they're okay with it, so.
But you need to be careful that clearly resident objection or a neighbor objection shouldn't be the only criteria for whether a chicken,
No, I mean.
Chicken permit is granted. It's one of the factors that may be taken into account by the body that's making that evaluation and decision. This type of ordinance and this type of license or permit would normally be an administrative process that does not go through a hearing. And I understand the desire, if that's council's wish, to go through that process and have it incorporated into an ordinance, we would certainly look at it. And it could be done. But I did not start, when I drafted this in combination with Carmen Avantini, the planning consultant, we did not go that direction to start with because there are some analogies to other, you know, dog licensing, should that be a hearing? It's not, it's an administrative process. The thought, I guess, our position was the work would be done at the ordinance stage to determine what are the criteria that must be met in order to keep chickens and, you know, set the ordinance up with those parameters, and if you meet those criteria, then you get the permit through an administrative process as opposed to a hearing process. But we can do whatever you'd like.
Well, I mean, and that's, that's perfectly reasonable to me in the event that you've already got built into the language an annual permitting process. So if, if people feel as though their neighbor isn't performing well, being a chicken grower, then, you know, they can go in front, or they can submit to be seen for some kind of a review panel to make their case.
Well, and again, this process, what's here before council today does not envision a hearing process. It's an administrative process. If somebody objected to their neighbor, or they felt their neighbor wasn't complying, you know, you may have verbal complaints, written complaints to the city for enforcement purposes. The city may take that into consideration on a renewal permit request. And that would be the way that would be addressed.
Well, that's kind of my point, yes.
Right.
Harvey?
Thank you. When we, when we first referred this ordinance, I asked for two things on it. One was reasonable setbacks, and the other one was the concurrence of adjacent homeowners as part of the permitting process. And I don't see either of those in this particular ordinance. I think the setbacks are far too permissive, they're going to be, especially in smaller communities like the one I live in, subdivisions, they're going to be right on top of each other. And, and I think it's only reasonable to have the neighbors, adjacent neighbors, agree and understand what their, their neighbor is going to be doing with their property, which is in fact farming. Thank you.
If I agree and understand, you mean, you mean that you want the neighbors to say, "Yes, you can," and if the neighbors say no, they can't have them?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't agree with it.
I think, I think they have a right to that.
Ted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ted.
Yeah, Mike.
How do we come up with 25 feet? I mean, what was that number? I mean, I've, I've.
I think that number simply because that was the fee that Ypsilanti uses.
But I thought some other community used, like, a larger.
25 feet from the next residential.
Yeah, I mean, didn't we have some other communities that were using a larger distance? I mean, here's my concern. We have a lot of critters in our backyard, you know, because we're on wetland, and we see all kinds of things during the middle of the night, raccoons, everything. I don't want to be in a situation where I have a window open during the middle of the night, and then I have something attacking a chicken coop, and it gets to the point where it's, you know, who am I going to call? The police to report a noise violation? Am I going to call, you know, am I going to, and then do I have to file a criminal complaint against my neighbor because of noise? Do I have to go through the courts for that, is it criminal? Or do I report it to our ordinance officer, that's going to, ordinance officer, sir, that's going to come out after the fact and say, "Well, they're quiet now"? I just don't know how you're going to enforce that if you have a noise violation, who do you call? Yeah, I mean, would we call you, Lloyd?
Well, you certainly could call me, and since we've all read the book, I won't sit here and tell council that the sky is falling, if we allow this, but a lot of the issues surrounding chickens and chicken coops would by default fall upon the police department.
Exactly.
For the majority of the day and for the majority of the week, because we all know that the code enforcement officer is only here for limited times during the day and a few days a week. So I too share the concerns about the setback in the proximity to lot lines. I would anticipate us, much like barking dogs and roaming cats, getting calls and complaints from residents. Only I think it could be worse than just the barking dog calls, because it'll be, "Well, my neighbor's cat attacked my chickens. The neighbor's dog's barking my chickens. The chickens are too loud, the chicken coop stinks." And the police are going to wind up being the bad guys on this because the code enforcement officer isn't going to be here. So absent some real improvements to those setbacks, I have serious reservations about allowing it.
See, that's my concern, and then you'll probably have neighbors more likely to prosecute the noise violations because it's a continuous problem, as opposed to just like a dark, barking dog one night, you know, they take the dog inside. Well, you're not going to take your five, six hens inside to keep them quiet. So that's what my concern is, I mean, we're going to be using resources to police the chickens that we could be using elsewhere. And that's what my concern is about these setbacks, I mean, I think they're too close, first of all, I think they're really too close.
Chickens go to sleep when it gets dark.
Yeah, and they're not, they're not loud.
They don't make, they don't make a lot of noise even during the day.
You would be amazed what I hear in my backyard at all hours of the night.
Are you calling Lloyd for that stuff?
I'm talking about just, no, I'm not talking, but see, cats stop fighting. You know, or I'm having raccoons, I have, you name it, in my backyard. And I'm just saying, if you have a chicken coop next door to the house, even when your chickens aren't sleeping, God knows what's going to happen in the middle of the night when all the critters are out there kind of checking things out.
Sorry, I don't mean to laugh at you, but I grew up with chickens and they just don't do that.
Well, I'm thinking all these communities that have them don't seem to be having this alarming.
That just doesn't happen.
I have herds of deer going through my backyard.
That's nice.
No, it's not, they eat half my trees.
Homewards associations.
I used to shoot them, but you moved there.
Go back. I do, I do. You'd be amazed what you see in my backyard.
Seen a coyote yet?
We've heard them, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So my understanding here is that homeowners associations, Tim, this question's for you, would trump this ordinance. So if there was something in a homeowners association stating that they weren't allowed, that.
Correct.
That wouldn't even be an issue for Mike, in your subdivision.
Well, no, I'm talking about the older subdivisions.
Well, okay, so for your subdivision or the other subdivisions or, but I understand your point.
But is that constitutional? Can you exclude one part of the city residents from? Can you exclude one part of the city residents from enforcement of an ordinance, when you have a restriction in a homeowners' association saying that you can't have them? I don't, is it?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
You're not excluding anybody.
Now, I think it depends on the subject matter of the restriction, but I think a restriction on this type of activity, the keeping of chickens, the ordinance can defer and allow a private restriction on a property to trump the ordinance.
Okay, but I mean, it's, it's-
Or be a reason that you would not issue a permit for one.
I understand, but what about those communities or those subdivisions that do not have homeowners' association bylaws which would prohibit this?
Well, they would be subject to the ordinance.
I, I just think that might be a challenge somewhere down the line, but.
Well, I, I think you'd have the same enforcement issue, even when there is a private subdivision restriction.
I don't know.
I mean, if you, if, if they allow it, you still have to have the enforcement issue, so.
Okay.
I think the-
I'm sorry, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, go ahead.
Uh, so that was my first question, was, uh, to clarify that. Also, um, just so everybody's clear, you would need a permit to get your chickens. It wasn't be, it wouldn't be as soon as we pass, uh, if we were to pass this, then all of a sudden you could get 10 chickens or something. In fact, I think the, the ordinance is here, it doesn't have a number on there. I don't know if that was meant, because we had the-
That was meant to be for council discussion.
Okay. So there would have to, there would be some sort of a permit, so we wouldn't just have free rein on chickens. Um, and then there's some other restrictions. For example, the next year, you would have to reapply for a permit. So if there was any issues, odor, smell, that couldn't be dealt with, uh, then the next year, they would, the person, homeowner would be denied a permit. So there's a self-correcting mechanism put in place here. Um, that's what I thought for now, but.
Do they have to renew their permit every year, then?
Like a dog tag.
Like a dog tag.
Yeah, but who's going to enforce the noise issues, or let's, I mean-
That was my question, too.
If you go back for your permit, say, the next year, and you're saying that there's a clause in here that addresses it, my question is, who's going to be the one addressing it? Is the city clerk going to say, no, you can't have the permit because we had a noise complaint? Or we had a complaint from your neighbor saying there was pollution? Or it smelled? I mean, who's going to enforce that? So I mean, that whole renewing the permit thing is basically going in to get a new dog tag. There's really no bite to it, no pun intended, but to get, uh, the application renewed.
Heck, at it.
Heck, yeah.
Was there anything in here about inspecting them, at any time at all, to see that everything's okay?
Tick vaccinations. Ted?
Yes?
Um, I grew up with chickens as a kid, and, uh, we had a larger piece of property. They are not that easy to raise for eggs. I mean, they have to be fed the right food, they have to have the right temperature, they have to have the right this, they have the right that, and a lot of people who get them as hobbies will shortly not have them anymore, because they are time-consuming. The people that want them will take care of them. It is not something, I don't see our community going out the first day, if or if not this is passed, and every other house getting chickens. It is not easy to do. It is frustrating when your chickens don't lay eggs for a whole entire season, and then you think, why am I feeding them, and they're not even laying any eggs? I mean, it takes a skill to do that. It's not just that easy. I don't see this as, as that, as our town's going to be overrun by chickens. It's-
If it does, then I will be shocked.
Exactly. I mean, if there are, I mean, I grew up with them. I think it's a great idea. I'm not putting any in my yard. I know how much work it is, and I have the perfect yard farm, and I'm, I'm not doing it, because I know how much work it is. We have winter here, they have to be sheltered from the winter, they have to, there is not going to be a lot of people chicken farming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One other comment I just thought of, uh, so, this is the first reading, meaning that if we pass this, this doesn't mean it's a done deal. All of a sudden, you can go out and get your hypothetical three or four chickens, uh-
There's not going to be a line.
There would, yeah. And I think, as Glenn mentioned, I would, I would be shocked if there's more than 10 people that even have this in the whole city. Uh, but with this being a first reading, if there are any concerns, for example, the, the setbacks, which I'm agreeing with, with Mike and Harvey, I think maybe we need to adjust that, or at least look at it. Uh, if there's some concerns with inspections, if that's not put in here, certainly, council, council members can take that up with Tim, or give their concerns to Lynn, and that can be addressed. So it's, it's not, like you said, it's not, all of a sudden, we pass this and free rein, free chicken rein.
Free range chickens.
Yeah. That was my final comment, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Um, the one thing that this ordinance does not address, that I have a concern with, is if we do ever reach a point where a permit is denied, what happens, what is the process for going through and having the homeowner, um, re-home the animals? Um, chickens are unfortunately not something that the Humane Society takes, so how do we go about and facilitate, um, helping the resident re-home these animals? Because the ordinance obviously prevents them from slaughtering them, so we need to take that into consideration as well. I agree with, uh, Aaron. This isn't something that people are going to run out, and we're going to have hundreds of people raising chickens, because it isn't an easy thing to do. I grew up on a farm and raised chickens myself, but there will be people that do take it up and realize that there's a difficulty, and either they choose voluntarily not to renew their permit, or for some reason are disqualified from renewing their permit. And animal control for Oakland County, I'm pretty sure will not take chickens, and the Humane Society does not take chickens. So that is a consideration that we need to really think about before we pass an ordinance like that, is what happens to these animals in that event?
It's not just if they, they get their paper pulled. Um, chickens don't last forever, chickens don't produce forever. People, if they're raising chickens for the egg production, once they stop producing, they're going to want to, um, move on to a new chicken. So I'm hoping, you know, I know that the language speaks to not carrying on the slaughtering of chickens in the city, and that, um-
There's processing centers.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sure that there's someplace that takes care of that. I, I know that, um, in Dearborn, there had been a place, um, I can't remember the name of it now, but, uh-
There's places locally that do it, too.
Yeah. You know, it's not like there's a chicken old folks, or old chickens home, or anything, but, uh-
But it is something that-
But I don't want to make it, turn it into a, you know, science.
No, I, I, I don't want to make light of this, but it is something that has to be considered, because it's not like if you take, you know, you take away somebody's dog license for dog cruelty, and you remove a dog from a home, you can't, you can take that dog to the Humane Society. With chickens, you don't have that option.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't see where it's our problem to how the chickens are disposed of, as long as they're not doing it, butchering them out in the backyard, and-
But to an extent, if we don't renew their permit, it is our, our issue.
And we don't even know the grounds for not renewing it.
Right.
But the way, if, if, if you have your, your neighbor's concurrence to your permit, that's going to be self-policing. It doesn't take anyone else to have to do that, do that running around and checking, or inspecting, or whatever. If you want a permit, you gotta talk to your neighbors, you say, I want to renew my permit, and your neighbor says, no, it stinks, I'm not going to go along with it, or you didn't take care of it, you didn't, uh, you didn't keep your end of the bargain. I think that's an essential part, and it makes policing it so easy. It's self-policing practically. So I'm, I'm a strong advocate for that. Thank you.
Not all neighbors get along, though. I've seen feuds over less than chickens, um, but I-
I know, but you don't, you don't establish policy by the extremes, you know, so.
So as this is a first reading, and there does seem to be several issues that the council has, um, what I think my recommendation would be is, we take this back, um, we look at the setbacks, we look at the permitting process, um, we look at the approval process. Are there any other conditions that the council would like us to look at before we bring this back to council?
It would have to be prorated distances, depending on the size of the lots, because there are some 50-foot lots out there.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so-
But it's 25 foot to a building, not a, a property line, so.
And that's too close.
Yeah, I mean, that's from here, the door.
That's just the minimums. From what the, from what the other, um, cities, yeah, from what the other cities we-
From what we've seen from the other cities, they have, um, maximum-minimums, and they took the both minimums.
Uh, the property line, it could maybe be the minimum, if you have a longer setback from the structure, or, or vice versa. It, it, you don't have to have the shortest of both, because then you're going to have them in each other's backyard.
I'm not that alarmed by it. Um, I, I would like us to have some kind of a, an organized way, in the event that someone isn't doing a very good job of tending to their stuff, that a neighbor has the ability to log a complaint where there can be a rec, record of that, so that it's easier to, you know, to determine it at the renewal time, that, you know, there are some running issues, and that there's a log created.
Okay. Um, under Part Two, Article Five, little letter A, maximum number chickens, did you want to make that determination now, or did you want to wait until that came back before you?
I don't have a problem talking about it now. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I don't have a problem talking about it now. I mean, uh, I've, I've read other ordinances, and I think it's pretty standard, either three or four. Tim, can you confirm that?
Whatever the council's been provided, I've not looked at the issue.
Yeah, most that I see, it was pretty typical to be five or six.
Five or six, okay.
Yeah.
Anecdotally, I typically see up to six.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would hope that, I'm hoping that people that want to do this already have some general understanding of how the process works with raising chickens, and they'll have a better understanding of what their physical circumstance would allow to have a healthy scenario for chickens to, to be raised in their backyard. You know, if you have a small lot, you're not going to end up wanting necessarily to have a maximum amount of chickens, so.
I don't see a great groundswell of people here wanting chickens.
I know, and, I mean, that kind of gets to the point of this, to me, though. I don't intend to have them, but I don't have any idea of why we would preclude people that wanted to do this from the ability to do that. I just don't get it.
I do. I mean, the two examples we had of people having, owning chickens were large parcel of land and a farm. I didn't buy a house in South Lyon in a subdivision, assuming that my bylaws prohibit chickens, to have a chicken coop 25 feet from my house. I didn't do it. I didn't know a lot of my neighbors didn't do it either. So I, I, I take offense to that. I do not want chickens in my neighbor's next-door, um, yard.
You have the same circumstance with your noisy dog neighbor, so, I mean, you don't get to select who lives next to you, and you don't get to determine what they do.
That's my point. A chicken coop is a permanent, uh, dis, structure in the backyard, as long as those chickens are in there. It's not a situation-
And as long as it's being tended to properly, it won't-
It's not a situation where I can call animal control and say, look, that dog, or call the police and say, that dog, I mean, sure, what am I supposed to do? Call the police? Have Lloyd send guys over, because I'm complaining about chicken noise? I mean, that's what I'm getting at.
What do they do with the barking dog? I mean, it's not like they take it away.
Animal control can take it away. If it's vicious, it's, well, you can get noise violations, you can do all kinds of stuff. But my point is, it's a permanent situation. You can't bring the dog, you, you, what, you leave the dog outside 24/7? I don't know.
I've got neighbors that do.
Well, I'm just saying, I did not move to South Lyon to have a chicken coop next door to me. I'm sorry.
Well, it doesn't cause me any alarm, so.
Ted?
I know, that's your point, and that's my opinion, so, there you go.
Aaron?
Okay, who's 12 now? Um, I, I'd like to see a, I'm sorry, it's just making me laugh. I'd like to see a compromise with, um, I don't think that a person, I don't think your neighbor has the right to decide what you do and what you don't do on your property. I think there should be ordinances, and I think there should be some type of compromise, like what Glenn said. If there is a history of violations, or a history of reports that are justified, then maybe the neighbor can be involved for a permit renewal. I don't think I'd like to see it just from the bat, because the neighbor doesn't like that you've painted your shutters green, so now you can't have chickens either. You know, that's just, that's not really realistic. And, and this spring, I went to visit my girlfriend in Belgium, and she has a small piece of property, and I was there for four days before I realized that she had two chickens in the backyard. She had two chickens, they fed a family of four, and I didn't hear a peep out of them for four days, and-
A peep?
A peep. I mean, they just are not noisy animals. I mean, they're just not a noisy animal. And so, and two chickens fed a family of four. They had enough eggs every week for a family of four, with two chickens. It's not, this is not a huge issue.
It is a huge issue.
There's just going to be so few people that take advantage of it.
It is, I mean, not everybody's going to go out, go to the chicken store.
Right, when my neighbors are coming up to me and say, what are we doing, putting chickens in South Lyon?
And you live in an association!
Right, but I'm lucky. I have an association that might prohibit, might prohibit it. I'm talking about everybody else that doesn't live in a, a homeowners' association.
I hope one of my neighbors does it, so I can get some eggs. I mean, because if they have more than two chickens, they're going to have to share.
Well, I, I move the first reading, and, um, to attend to the, the list of things that we'd like to be modified.
I'm going to support that.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Tim has further discussion.
Uh, could, I'd like, like a couple of, maybe discussion from council on, um, I'm not sure we got any kind of indication on the number of chickens that would be allowed, at least from this body. Um, and then I want to, I just want to raise a point. If you look at, uh, 1494 Sub E, the coop requirement, and we have a setback, but the language there also, if you look at the Sub D as well, and acknowledges that there would be a fenced enclosure.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, perhaps, uh, the planning consultant has some input on this as well. I, I've just got in my head, should the setbacks apply to just the coop structure, or also the fenced-in enclosure? I don't know enough about chickens to answer.
Yeah, I would think the enclosure, I mean, that's the envelope of where their environment is.
So I just want to make sure that council is clear. We're looking at a 300-square-foot maximum fenced-in area, and you start to work within envelope concepts. So if you have a lot size with setbacks on the side and rear, you're looking at filling in some kind of an allowable envelope for a chicken coop and enclosure, and must the entire enclosure and coop fit within that required setback? And just-
That's what I think is appropriate.
I mean, they live in the whole house.
Depending on what those setback requirements are, there may be lots where chickens will not be permitted at all.
Mm-hmm. Well, certainly, if you're planning on doing the, the maximum-size coop, or I mean, um, in var, yard, whatever it was called.
Enclosure.
Enclosure, yes. You know, so you have to scale appropriately.
I suppose we ought to look at a minimum enclosure size?
I thought that there was one. I thought it was four square feet per chicken, so, oh, that's the coop, I see.
That's just the coop size. The fenced-in area.
Hmm.
Probably like to get off of there.
And then, I, I think the other-
10 square feet a, a chicken?
The other point that I, if, if council's willing to discuss it, is, do you have any thoughts on, you know, we've, we've heard a couple of references to, maybe the 25-foot maybe the twenty-five-foot setback from the next dwelling is not large enough or ten feet from the property line? Any thoughts from council on what appropriate distances should be? Whether Mr. Mayor's thrown out possibly a proration based on lot size or square footage? That's just- We could certainly start working on that. I just, it would be helpful to have some guidance from council on your thoughts.
I'm good with the ten feet.
Or if we, if we can bring back other examples or some additional research, um, before finalizing things.
I think we need more on that. State your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Steve Kennedy. I live at ten seventy-nine Vassar in the city of South Lyon and I appreciate the opportunity, uh, from the city council to speak about the amendment to chapter fourteen regarding the raising of chickens within the city limits. I moved to South Lyon with my family over forty years ago to enjoy all that a city had to offer. Things like sidewalks, paved streets, city water, nearby shopping, and a well-maintained urban environment. Making that decision, I realized there was a cost that you incur to enjoy these benefits. Higher taxes, zoning ordinances, and so forth help to assure the city can maintain that quality of life. I enjoy the fact that we do not allow residents just park their cars on their front lawns and that we have a blight ordinance giving the city permission to intervene when necessary for those properties that are not properly maintained by the residents. If these types of things were not important, I would have purchased acreage in the surrounding countryside where the rules and regulations are less restrictive. And so it is with the question of allowing chickens to be raised within the city limits. Again, if that's the environment or opportunity that someone wants, I believe there are locations far better suited for that activity than within the South Lyon city limits. However, if the city is intent on allowing the raising of chickens within the city, within the city boundaries, then I think additional consideration should be given to the impact of that decision on those residents who do not favor it. The amendment to chapter fourteen, as currently written, does not apply to those developments where a homeowners association, rules and regulations prohibit such activities. The majority of these developments include homes occupying large areas of land in the newer subdivisions. Since the ordinance won't be applied to those areas in most cases, then which areas will be affected? Basically, it will be the older, smaller developments that are already densely populated. It will include those homes on streets like Lyon Boulevard, Winchester, Wellington, University, Oxford, and yes, Vassar, where the lots are only sixty-foot wide and the homes lacking an attached garage are only ten-foot from the property line. Allowing chickens to be raised ten feet from the property line is in essence placing them directly on the edge of the deck, patio, or other living space of the adjacent property. That would be like Councilman Kibble sitting on his driveway relaxing and the coop is located where Mayor Wallace is seated. That's ten feet from the property line. And Mayor Wallace lived in this subdivision and he understands exactly how small these areas are. If the city is intent on allowing chickens in these densely populated areas, then I believe they should follow the lead of other cities that recognize the need to provide an adequate buffer space between the chickens and the owners of those neighboring properties. This includes cities like Ann Arbor and Chelsea where the chickens cannot be located closer than ten feet from the property line and forty feet, cannot be closer than forty feet from any structure on the adjacent property. Or we could use the example that's been set by Northville, which requires that the chickens be kept at least thirty feet from the property line. In either, in either event, this would allow the chickens to be raised more directly in the center of the yard of those who want to raise the chickens rather than, than on the edge of the property of those who do not. Requiring that both setback requirements be met would provide the same benefit to those of us living in the smaller city lots, basically distanced from the chickens, as that provided to those living on the larger parcels in the newer subdivisions. The cities I mentioned understand the need to avoid encroaching on the adjacent neighbors and I sincerely hope that South Lyon will do likewise by adding the additional setback requirements to the amendment for chapter fourteen, as well as limiting the number of chickens that be kept, can be kept to two, as most cities have and vote to not approve the amendment to chapter fourteen, as it is currently written. Very few of the ordinances that I came across allowed for more than about three chickens, so I'm not sure where the information came from that was up to about six. I thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter.
Yes. Are there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose.
Aye.
I'm willing to go, I'm willing to go another round with it.
So was it?
It was four-three.
Four-three, okay. Four?
Four, yes. Yes, yes.
So we're gonna yell out for a roll call? Do you wanna do that?
Sure.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kepkowski?
Yes.
Rizzi?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Waddell?
No.
Kramer?
No.
Dixon?
No.
So that means it goes on to the next round with a few corrections made in it and then still can be decided on at that point. New business, consider amendment to SafeBil professional services agreement.
Okay, I bring this forward to you as our current plumbing and mechanical inspector is retiring effective July thirtieth. I have attached for you an amendment. It was brought to me today, um, by Councilman Kibble asking me to speak to our current electrical inspector about his desire to continue to provide electrical inspection and review services for the city. I did speak to him. The reason I had not spoken to him before today is in speaking with our building secretary, I had spoken to Anne. She said he covered not only Lyon Township but several other townships and was currently very busy in all of those townships and she did not think that it would be an issue for him to give up South Lyon because of his busy schedule with those. When I had the discussion with Brandon this afternoon, um, I discovered in speaking with him that he is in fact, um, covering Lyon Township on a bi-weekly basis. He only works for them two weeks out of the month and the other townships, he was only covering for several months on an emergency basis as their inspector had, had an emergency medical necessary procedure and so he would actually like to remain continuing to do our electrical inspections. So while I still would like to have SafeBil do our mechanical and plumbing inspections because I believe that will allow us to transition most smoothly and have continuity, I would have us take the electrical and electrical plan inspections out of the amendment.
I was wondering, we had talked also, though, about SafeBil doing plan review. Do you see any complication with you guys doing plan review and the inspector simply doing the, the inspections? Yes.
Please introduce yourself, just to-
Donovan Smith, uh, your building official.
I know, city-
And consultant, uh, works for SafeBil. Thank you, how's that? Well, I wasn't aware of the, uh, the amended change. We, I conduct most of your plan reviews anyway. So, to answer your question, probably not much of an impact. What always becomes, forgive us, South Lyon everything for a mo- moment, what always becomes, um, in some cases difficult, not necessarily here, when you don't control the whole operation, there sometimes can be, you know, some conflicts between, 'cause I don't control the other inspector, right? Uh, so I can't wor- work on scheduling, I can't coordinate any of the things that may come into play, with those types of inspections. Now, in the past, there's not been a major problem, there's been a couple of minor things that were worked out, but, um, speaking as a building official, not as a SafeBil person, it is obviously easier when you can control the whole thing, but, um-
But I'm, you're already doing the plan review on the other, the mechanicals, plumbing and all that kind of stuff.
There's not that much, I mean, there's really, you know, unfortunately, not right now. There's not that much commercial work going on, so, but yes, we're pretty much handling it anyway.
Well, and, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem as though it would create any concerns for the inspector. He's going to be looking for the same, same performance from a builder irrespective of his review of the plan or yours. And there was a, a comment that timing, sometimes, timing and price actually, had sometimes complicated things when the inspector was doing the plan review. So if you guys can do it in one fell swoop, take that off the plate and, um, you know, then everything is pretty much, when he can schedule, you know, um, he'll be able to. I, my concern, this was brought up simply because he's been performing for us well and the retirement of our mechanical inspector, I don't understand why we would end up just kinda showing him the door. And it was brought up that he was, he was under a lot of pressure from the other communities. That seems to have been a temporary circumstance, so I would just assume the guy had the opportunity, if he wanted to remain here, that he were able to.
So, SafeBil's doing, if we approve this mechanical-
Plumbing and building inspection.
Plumbing and building inspection. And then we'd still have to wait for the electrical inspection to be completed by the gentleman that's doing it right now?
Yeah, it's, it always has been, yes. And this town is standing here.
All right, how much do we pay the building, I mean, the electrical inspector right now?
He has the same fee schedule as we have to SafeBil, which is seventy-five percent of the permit fee. The city keeps twenty-five percent of the fees and SafeBil gets twenty-five percent.
So that's only fifty percent?
No.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, you said seventy-five and twenty-five?
Yes.
The city gets twenty-five and the SafeBil gets seventy-five?
Right, and Brandon gets twenty, seventy-five percent of the electrical inspection permit fee. So if there's a per, an electrical inspection, whatever the permit, the fees are for electrical inspections, he gets seventy-five percent of that and the city gets twenty-five percent. We have a set fee schedule for plan reviews, building inspections, mechanical and plumbing inspections, electrical inspections.
The cost doesn't change.
The cost doesn't change.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the whole coordination thing. I mean, you have SafeBil doing three-quarters of it and I understand Brandon's been here a long time doing this, but I'm just trying to, you know, I mean, if, they're getting the same percentage, I mean, you'd have one com- I'm just looking at this from a time point.
If you were looking for the best of all scenarios, maybe that would make more sense, but why would we end up, you know, discounting this guy simply because the mechanical inspector had left? You know, he, he's been performing just fine for us all along, so-
I agree, you need to be loyal to the people that work here.
No, I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if it's really a cost change or is it?
I, I thought about that, I wouldn't have brought it up if I thought that we were selling ourselves short.
So, I mean, if I was getting a mechanical inspection or I needed a plumbing inspection, I would call-
That's coordinated by the building department.
Right, I would call-
Right now, for all of your inspections, whether it's building, mechanical, plumbing, or electrical, you call City Hall and all of your inspections are scheduled through City Hall.
Okay, I, that's, I mean, if you're a resident watching this and you're trying to figure out what you're gonna do.
All of your inspections, no matter what, even as it's been prior to now, it's all, all been scheduled through City Hall.
Still call the building department.
Right, you call the building department.
And then City Hall then will call SafeBil and then will call the electrical inspector to set it up. So you have to make two phone calls from City Hall, okay?
In the past, we've made three phone calls.
Three, okay, yeah, okay. All right.
So what exactly are we considering now?
So just the mechanical-
Plumbing and-
Plumbing.
Mechanical, plumbing, and plan reviews.
Right.
Leaving electrical out.
So you'd take the electrical inspect, you would modify the amendment to remove electrical inspection?
All right, then I'll make the motion, uh, that we, uh, enter into a contract, amend the contract with SafeBil to include plumbing, mechanical, and plan review services for a rate of seventy-five percent of the permit fee.
I'll support.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Pose, okay. And we scrapped number two, right?
Yeah.
Number three. Uh, consider bids for the replacement of the police station roof and authorize accepting the bid from the low bidder. You wanna speak on this, chief?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'll make it very brief. The police department roof is over twenty-four years old. The past couple of winters, we've experienced not real serious leaks, but leaks that have done some interior damage. We went out and got, uh, three bids. We, uh, believe it or not, actually prefer the low bidder. He is offering us his best materials at a price, at the, at the price that he would normally charge for his ba- very basic materials. His thinking being he would like to, uh, do a showcase job on the South Lyon Police Department and then refer customers to the police department to look at the building, look at the roof, and check to see that we're satisfied. So we are requesting to go with the low bidder for fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and that is a budgeted amount, so we're seeking council's approval.
I would like to point out, the, uh, gentleman wanted to be in attendance this evening, but his son's absolute first baseball game ever was scheduled at seven-thirty this evening and he just couldn't miss it. So he did leave business cards, so if the council have any questions about it-
And he was here till seven-twenty.
And he, yes. But he just did not want to miss his son's absolute first baseball game.
And that's understandable.
Yep.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Lloyd, does that include that, that bid in addition, it's thirty-five dollars per sheet for the four-by-eight?
Well, the first, in, in his bid, each, each bid was slightly different as to decking if needed.
Okay.
And they never really know how much, uh, how many sheets of plywood or decking they'll need till they get the shingles off. But his was actually the, uh, the best offer for the city where the, up to the first ten sheets are included in his bid.
Okay.
And then it's thirty dot, five dollars for the eleventh sheet and above, which was ten dollars cheaper than anybody else. They wanted forty-five dollars, some of them for every sheet.
In essence, he wants to build his model.
Right.
At his cost, um, somewhat. And we benefit.
Happy to see there's water and ice shield in the valleys and stuff, so, I mean, the guy's gonna do a good job for him, too.
All right, I'll make the motion that we accept a bid by, uh, Home Pro Roofing to replace the roof on the police station at a cost of fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars plus thirty-five dollars per four-by-eight-foot sheet of decking over, uh, ten, brandy, over ten.
I'll second.
And he's not gonna know any need on that until they peel the roof, so.
I second it.
Okay. Further discussion?
Pricing's only good till July fifteenth on the counter.
Actually, I, um, did make that call just to be sure and he, uh, he guarantees me he'll honor that price.
All right, sold.
Now we're on old prices, great. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A pose? And now we move on to consider bids for the purchase of a new fire truck to replace the nineteen ninety-six KEM engine and currently in service known as Engine One and authorize accepting the Pierce Stabler bid with the chassis payment option. Class A foam system, tool mounting, loose equipment, compartment, cap customization, options for a total purchase price of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars. That sounds so enormous, but folks, that is actually a deal. Chief?
All right, uh, thank you, Mayor and council. So I tried to save a small forest, um, this could have been your bid packet, so these were all the, or excuse me, this could have been your council packet, these were all the bids that came back, so, um, this is the culmination of a, a solid two years of work. I would like to thank Doug Buresh, is in the audience tonight. Doug, myself, Lieutenant Jim Sheckel, um, Deputy Chief Mike Weir, we're kinda the main group behind this and really we wanted to start, what did we, what did we need? What was that price gonna cost? This was in the budget. Based on what, uh, kinda needs assessment, we were thinking we were gonna be in about the five hundred and- Based on what kind of needs assessment, we were thinking we were gonna be in about the five hundred and fifty thousand, excuse me, five hundred fifty, hundred, five hundred, fifty hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
It's even baffling you.
Yeah, good lord. So the, the nice thing was, is that all of the bids that came in were below that mark. So we were, we were very happy to see that. Not that that means that this is all of a sudden some deal of the century, but we are glad that they all came in under as opposed to.
Sounds like approximately seventy thousand less.
Correct, that, but when you kind of approximate out the, the four bids. We did, we had been working with a series of vendors up into this because we did want it to be competitively bid. Several of the vendors that we had been dealing with decided not to bid on it, which I was quite honestly a little surprised by. We had four bids submitted, two were by Pierce. Pierce in southeast Michigan is represented by Halt Fire. Rick Sinclair from Halt Fire is here tonight, he's the sales representative that we've been working with. One of the things that wasn't a issue with this bid, but is a nice factor, is Halt Fire's repair facilities in Wicksum. And we actually have been using them for quite some time. So they, a lot of the parts, even though we have different manufacturers now, is interchangeable. So there is, there's some benefit with them being right up the road. The other part with Pierce, is they're a big reputable firm, the Sabre Line, the best I can compare it to is about their, their version of the F-150. This is a very standard line apparatus that they do. And the reason we were able to get the price that we were is that we chose very standard options. There was a request for the extra ten thousand dollars in there. That was basically, we have the standard apparatus that we want, we just want to then customize the compartments as now that we have, or if you approve the, the apparatus purchase tonight, they can really kind of best suit our needs for the next twenty years. We did have initially for the sale of the current engine as part of this, two of the vendors decided not to bid on it, the other two prices were quite low. So we're gonna go for third market, or aftermarket, third party to sell that. We've had mild success with that in the past and I think we can get more than what was in the, what they had offered. With Pierce, they came back with a couple of options. There's basically a chassis prepayment option, which I would advocate for. And another option that we would like to have, this, this falls under the like to have, not the need to have, is a foam system. With this being a twenty-year truck, this, this is something that we currently use, but it's a little bit more cumbersome to set it up now. This would just make it a flip of a switch. So the fact that the pricing came back where it did, that would be something that I would like. If we have to cut it out, we could, but that, that would be a nice function for us to have going forward, so.
Happy to entertain any questions.
I think your twenty-year expectation to, to get that foam that's a, you know, a standard practice anymore, you know, that makes perfect sense to have that incorporated into the vehicle.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, I just want to say that it's, you're saying that it's a two-year process and you did your homework on it. So I feel confident that you guys did, making the right decisions, so I have no questions, absolutely none.
Thank you. That's become a common practice, you've been doing very good all along, Mike.
Thanks.
Somebody want to buy a fire engine?
Yeah.
I will, I'll make the motion. Let me find the packet here. I will make the motion.
Will we know it by a different siren or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
Will we know it when it's going down the road by a different siren?
No, they're all pretty standard. The, the one unique feature that we put on this is gonna have what's called a Roto Ray on it, which is a pretty unique light, spinning light on the front. So that was kind of one touch that we did want to add that'll help separate it, so it'll, she'll, she'll be a good-looking rig, there's no question about that, so.
I, I found it here.
To parade-worthy vehicle.
I can, I can tell which truck's going out. When you live across from the fire station, you can tell which truck is going out when they go out. I'm like, oh, that's like one going out.
To approve the authorization of not to exceed four hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars for Pierce Saber Fire Pumper and related equipment.
I'll support it.
I've always supported it.
I think, I think your monies was wrong.
Four hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Oh, you said seventy-eight, I thought you said sixty-eight, I'm sorry, my bad.
Said sixty-eight came after that.
Four, seven, eight, six, eight, three. Thank you.
I wanted some eight-by-ten glossy colored pictures. This wasn't that exciting.
Sorry.
He's got the big packages with the eight-by-ten glossy.
Yeah, you're having.
I will say, I wasn't impressed by the little autocad drawing, I wasn't impressed, but I wanted it.
Is that because we've got the big salt truck in there and that's why you're?
Yeah, see, Bob's trying to show you up.
That really was nice though, that you guys put a great, great package together, it's clear how much research you did. Alrighty.
What are we gonna be, what's the delivery date on these, Mike?
So part of the bid process was to add June thirtieth of sixteen. And in talking with Rick, we probably, about a nine-month build time, thereabouts. So probably, hopefully, when the winter thaw, and will hopefully flowers will come up and we'll get a new fire truck, so.
I mean, it'll be brand spanking new.
Where, where's it made at?
This particular truck will be made in Bradenton, Florida.
Oh.
The chassis itself will be made in Appleton, Wisconsin. Pierce manufacturers, all of our chassis, the chassis will be trucked down to Bradenton, Florida, where it'll be built in a Pierce facility in Bradenton.
Do you drive it back or do you put it on a train or?
Pierce delivery engineer will drive it back. We like to do that, just give the chance for the truck to get some normal road miles on it. Get worn in a little bit, because once it gets here, every time it gets run, it's gonna be run hard. So this, this is a nice, you know, easy drive up the freeway and get a chance, if there's any problem, we show up and get off there.
Stop by, help out some town, having a fight.
So the warranty doesn't start until those however many hundred miles are taken.
The warranty doesn't start until the day it's delivered to your place.
All right. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we got the most outstanding fire department, I've been saying it, and it's, it's, I'm very comfortable with them.
Yours is chief, Bob.
Yeah. Number five, consider resolution authorizing the city as the Act Fifty-One Agency for the Joint Safe Routes to School Grant in partnership with the South Lyon Community Schools, Lyon Township, and the Road Commission of Oakland County.
Okay, item five and item six actually go kind of hand in hand. The Safe Routes to School Grant is due in August, as you know. And there are only two Act Fifty-One agencies that are part of this project, the city and the Oakland County Road Commission. And they have chosen not to be the Act Fifty-One Agency to apply, that leaves the city of South Lyon. This resolution establishes us as the designated Act Fifty-One agent, attesting that we will carry out the funds. I've had the city attorney look at it, he's made some modifications to the standard resolution that is normally done because it is a multi-jurisdictional one. Normally, it would say that we are fully responsible for all maintenance and all funds and things like that. So this allows us to partner and it also shows that the other partnering entities are attesting to the existence of those funds. Lyon Township is passing a similar resolution attesting to their portion of the funds as well. And these resolutions are required to be part of the grant application, as is the letter of fiduciary commitment, which is the next item on the agenda.
I did have a question on this, only in that with us being the party that's responsible for, you know, the, the Act Fifty-One community, the ongoing maintenance, if it isn't performed outside of our jurisdiction, are we vulnerable to anything punitive from the state?
No, and that's what.
How do we, I mean, is that in the contract, the agreement, excuse me, that we had signed earlier?
That is part of what Tim and I have been working out with the Safe Routes to School and with MDOT. And that'll be part of the agreement that we end up as a city signing with MDOT, is that we're not responsible for maintenance of anything that falls outside of our jurisdiction.
The ongoing maintenance, yes, right, okay. Well, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I make the motion that we, we approve the resolution authorizing the city as the Act Fifty-One Agency for the Joint Safe Routes to School Grant in partnership with South Lyon Community Schools, Lyon Township, and the Road Commission of Oakland County.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, I just want to say, no, thank you for continuing this process. I know we started this, what, last year, some safety concerns. And I think this is a perfect example of how we can work with other communities, surrounding communities, including our South Lyon Community Schools. So I'd like to see this keep on moving and very positive, thank you.
As we noted, and it was noted, that the city has to initiate this, the township can't do it. It's not written that way, so that's why we have to do it. I have my druthers and self-concerns about, I haven't heard anything from the township yet. And I've mentioned it to Lanny before, their supervisor, that I'd like to see some evidence that you're putting in some sidewalks and making it, because this is all moot point, as far as I'm concerned, for safety. These kids are still walking down the middle of their streets out of Lyon Township to get to our sidewalks. So I hope to heck that they are doing their part on that side. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Number six, consider authorizing the mayor to sign the required fiduciary letter of commitment for the Safe Route School Grant.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Safe Routes to School fiduciary letter of commitment.
I'll support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Consider purchase of the Extreme. Is this special Extreme? V six, six thousand vac leaf collector.
Bob? Thanks, thank you, Mayor. I've worked for the city for thirty-seven years, and for thirty-seven years, we've picked up leaves. Thirty-seven years. We catch a lot of heat come fall. When are you gonna be on our street, when are you gonna be on that street? I rake leaves, they've been sitting out there, so. I took it to my guys earlier this year and said, okay, where do we want to put our money this year? Are we interested in vacuuming up more leaves or purchasing a new chipper for our brush and stuff like that? Both are needed for the city. And it was unanimous among my guys that they felt it was time to try to up the ante and do a better job with our leaf pickup. Our leaf pickup season lasts eight to ten weeks. And with that said, it's a very labor-intensive time. But remember, we have twenty-eight miles of curb line in the city that we service. So even though we break the city up into four quadrants, it still takes every bit of eight weeks to get those leaves picked up. And we try to do it till the first snow falls. So with that said, we're still gonna keep our old leaf vac in, in service with a truck and a box on the back. But we went out and we acquired three new bids to, and in fact, we went and saw each one of these leaf vacs and how they worked, the good, the bad, the ugly of each one. And we feel very comfortable that the low bid of Extreme V XV six thousand leaf collector will service the city for the next twenty years. With that though, we're gonna have to build another box, we'll do that in-house. But that's gonna enable us to put two crews at each end of the city. And we're gonna do our very best to be even more timely than we have in the past.
I, I don't think you're untimely. I mean, this is, I mean, you just drive by anybody who's out there putting their leaves in little tiny.
I know.
Bags.
Well, the nice part, if you have a breakdown of the existing vacuum, you know, this is.
I mean, this is a great service that you guys provide and.
It's a service that a lot of communities have stopped doing.
Exactly, I mean, I don't think anybody should complain in our community.
Thirty-seven years ago, as you noted, we were burning them.
In the streets?
Yeah. So we're away from that.
No, I mean.
And you've had a couple more staff members, so I think this is appropriate.
I'm sure we're still gonna have some moments. People saying, well, you picked up last week, but now I got a new pile out here, and we get that. But if you paid attention over the past seven or eight years, there's been times that we even had the.
Front-end loader.
Front-end loader up there, scooping them and scraping and trying to do the very best we can. So this is just another example of trying to put the money in the right location and to give extreme service to our residents.
Well, this Extreme unit should do that.
I think so too, I think it's.
Wow, that's good, I never thought of that.
I think, I think it's.
I find it extremely important, yes.
Bob, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of an Extreme XV six thousand vac leaf collector for the price of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars.
I'll second.
Further discussion? For the audience, we did budget for this kind of thing, this isn't just popping up and we're tapping into our fund balance. So we already planned for this.
Exactly right, we put thirty-five thousand in the budget for this, it came in at thirty-two and some change. And the reason why we're here so early in the budget year is we're trying to get this for this.
This year.
Leaf season, which starts in what, about two and a half months?
Yeah, cause your money, you can buy rakes for everybody.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Put it towards your dump truck, two thousand, you have leftover.
All right, move on, number eight, and final of the new businesses, consider purchase of a two thousand sixteen DPW salt plow, dump truck.
I don't know why this is, but right after leaf season. Comes snow season. And even though leaf season may last eight to ten weeks, seems like snow season anymore lasts about eight months. I don't know what that's all about. But this past year, we only had four large salt trucks on the road. And that was due to a twenty-year-old truck that broke down to the point it was irreparable. And we put it on my deal last fall and sold it for about ninety-eight hundred dollars that the city received. But we didn't replace that truck last year. So this year, we went out, we did our due diligence, and Doug Bures, who worked on the salt truck, I'm sorry, the fire truck, was very helpful in this. And what we found is, there is a consortium of seven communities that went out, got a my deal program in place. And since then, over twenty-nine communities have joined forces in that, and we are now part of that. And they go out, they bid it, they find out what most communities are looking for in salt trucks or whatever they're bidding. They put a bid package together and they put it out there, and they get the lowest deals on. In fact, you don't even need to either get other truck manufacturers coming in and bidding on it because they can't eat this deal, okay? So with that said, we have joined this consortium. And Rochester Hills Municipal Cooperative member list consists of twenty-eight, which now we're part of, the twenty-nine communities. And in so doing, we got a bid for a brand-new salt truck, but it's a two-part deal. We buy the cabin chassis from Wolverine Freightliner at a cost of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. We then ship that truck down the road to Flint, Michigan, where Napa Hyde is. And they outfit that truck with all of the right snowpiling equipment that's needed, blades, lights, salt spreaders off the backside, all of that. And that comes in at seventy-eight thousand dollars, five twenty-five. So we bid one hundred and sixty-five thousand, I'm sorry, we budgeted one hundred and sixty-five thousand this year for a new salt truck. And it came in at one sixty-three, nine eighty-one, which I was pretty happy to do that. With this said though, we're probably not gonna see this truck till the soonest, February first, okay?
Does this have an aluminum box? I didn't really go through all the paper in here.
Say that again?
Does this have alum, an aluminum box, yeah?
Stainless, stainless.
Oh, stainless, okay, uh-huh. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The, weren't we going to buy one last year and the bids were just too high?
Yes, exactly. And in fact, they came down a little bit. When this consortium put this package together and twenty-nine, twenty-eight communities bought out of it, it drove the price down. So in a weird way, we saved a few dollars.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, the eight-by-ten glossy pictures, show, show it in red. We're not getting a red one, are we?
No, let me tell you, that red one. No, let me tell you, that red one was the demo we could have bought-
Okay.
For a hundred and sixty-five thousand, or a hundred and sixty-seven, I'm sorry. We're getting the one on the very last page.
The white one?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it'll be yellow.
It'll be yellow, okay. I just didn't want it to clash with our fire trucks, you know, in the dark when they're out there, and it's got a light on it. I didn't want anybody mistaking it for a fire truck.
No, it's going to be yellow.
Okay, good. That's, makes me happy. That's all I have.
Did you look into the extended plow that Nova uses?
The problem with, they have a lot more straight, longer roads than we do. We do so many cul-de-sacs in neighborhoods, when you get in with extended plows like that, you can't make the radius turn. And so, you don't even use the blade on that. You use the belly blade when you're in neighborhoods with cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
Just a, kind of a technical question, and I'm all for this. I'm just curious, right now, correct me, but you're separated by quadrants, where somebody does north side of town and south side, correct? How are you going to, how are we going to determine where you distribute this truck? Is it-
Well, my guys are so good. They work it out among themselves. I don't get too weird about that. They do an incredible job.
Absolutely.
I think everybody sort of inherits one specific neighborhood, and they get used to the neighbors in that specific neighborhood also.
Right.
And so, they try to plow to a point that they take care of their neighborhoods.
Right.
And I like that.
Fred does an excellent job of myself, by the way.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, somebody want to buy him?
I'd like to approve the purchase of a cabin chassis from Wolverine Freightliner, any equipment with attachments, and that truck equipment for a total of nine hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars.
I'll support.
That's been supported by Mike. And that does, and that does beat buying a used truck for three thousand more.
Thank you very much.
And so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, manager's report.
I just have a few things this evening. In your packet, in the information section, there is an invitation to the South Lyon Area Youth Assistance Summer Players. They are doing a couple of different drama or theatrical presentations. One on Thursday, July 30th, at 7:00 PM for their elementary students, and one on Friday, July 31st, at 7:00 PM for their middle school students. And all of the city council and myself have been invited. That is an organization that the city supports through our general fund tax dollars. The second item, I put in front of you a copy of our implementation schedule for BSNA. As you can see, we are moving forward very quickly with that. We will begin, the audit starts next, or starts on Wednesday for the city for the last fiscal year. Once that is complete, we will begin early September with the implementation of BSNA and the financial software, and then with utility billing, finalizing with our building department's implementation in November, barring any unforeseen complications with the conversion of data. And the last item is the most popular item, I think, going to be on the agenda tonight. We received a letter from the state last week, on the sixteenth, informing us that there was a public Act 84 passed. It is a one-time general funding, and the city of South Lyon will be receiving approximately ninety-two thousand three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars and fifty-two cents to be spent on local and major streets. It'll be distributed in quarterly payments over the next fiscal year, starting in November. And so, I have already contacted our engineers. There are no restrictions on how much of it has to be spent on major or local streets. But as we all know, a lot of our local streets need some significant work, so I think that is the best area to concentrate on. So, I want to meet with HRC and Bob and find the best project and get that ready to go for early next spring. And by then, we will have the majority of that ninety-two thousand dollars already in hand from the state.
Already in HRC's pocket.
That beats an earmark any day.
Okay, and one more item?
The only other item, we have the Royal Garden Trio at the Friday in the park as our concert in the park. And then the DIA is doing their thing on August 7th in Paul Baker Park.
One more thing? Staff adjustment in the offices?
Kristen Baker, or Kristen Delaney has moved on to a new position. She has left the city, and we will be beginning to advertise for that position as soon as I finish writing the help-wanted ad. And I would take any applications or any information from the council on how they would like to see that position filled.
Didn't somebody else start in the last two weeks?
The deputy clerk.
Oh, yes, we have a new deputy clerk, Judy Piper, but she is not here tonight. She did start last Monday, and she is doing an excellent job, training very well, and getting along very well with the staff.
She took my money for my water bill very well.
I'm glad to hear that.
Stamped her heart, eh? Okay, Bev?
Why, we're just going to mention the quartet next August 11th at Paul Baker Park and Lyon Township Ethic Festival, which is the fifteenth. Couple of fun things to go to.
Mike?
I think we spent enough money tonight for the year, so I'm done spending money. Thanks.
Harvey?
I agree. I'm done, too.
Joe?
Yes, I want to apologize in advance because I have a list, and I started making more and adding to it, and it's quite lengthy, so I apologize.
You have two minutes.
That, thank you, Ted. Okay, so, I've already touched upon the August 11th DIA kickoff. Actually, Lynn, I believe you said the seventh, and it's actually the eleventh.
Seventh.
So, just to elaborate on that, there's going to be string quartets, violins. It's going to be showcasing the arc that's coming through. Very classy event, in my opinion, something that our community needs and is very good for our community. Also coming up this Saturday is Blues Brews and Brats. It's hard for me to say those three Bs at once, but that's coming up this Saturday. Start time, three o'clock?
Start time is three o'clock, yes.
Three o'clock, okay. So, I'll be looking forward to seeing everybody there. I'll be volunteering.
Crosswind Fire Hall.
Yes, Crosswind Fire Hall. Thank you. Ted, off in the Whipple Street parking lot. Also, I'm very pleased that we purchased that property off of McCady Street. And I've been speaking to a lot of residents about that property and just asking them what they want to see and what they, what their thoughts are. And the general consensus is that they would like to see it torn down. I understand that we're going to approach, let businesses come in and make their proposals, but in the meantime, people just want to get rid of that eyesore. So, I don't know exactly logistics of how we would do that, but my personal opinion is, the sooner that we could tear that down, the better, I think, for everybody in our whole community. So, that's that. Last thing was just about, wanted to speak to the tree removal, and just give a little history of how this came about, because as you could hear from the people in the crowd, there was some feelings, and I just wanted to give my take. So, basically, I wanted to provide some history. Last Monday, several residents of Oak Creek Village subdivision informed me they received notification from DTE regarding possible trimming and removal of the trees. They received the notification on the twentieth, and the tag said that they were going to come out on the twenty-third. So, three days after receiving notification, they thought that their trees would possibly be removed, at the very least trimmed. So, basically, there was a lot of confusion. There's a lot of mixed emotions, upset emotions, and people were scared of losing their trees, and they felt like DTE was not catering to their needs and basically communicating. So, I did a little research, and it turns out that the homeowners' concerns have a lot of merit. And as the resident mentioned, there have been lawsuits filed against DTE for excessive and what's been called scorched earth tree removal. That's what they've been categorized, not my words, but other people have categorized it. So, after learning these details and looking into everything, I contacted Lynn and asked if she could help out, basically just help the residents. And then she informed me that she actually knew about this. In June, DTE sent some sort of communication, and I'm not sure why we didn't address it then. I would have liked to seen it, but that's a whole different story. I'm not going to go there. But Lynn suggested a few options how the city could help our residents, including holding off on any tree maintenance until after DTE would be willing to come in and have a public forum where people could have their concerns, which I'm glad to see that they've agreed to that. Also, place notice on the city website, informing residents that they can contact City Hall. That has been done. Thank you. And then last was, put a resolution before council encouraging DT to practice responsible tree removal. So, that's what we had today. It was basically the resolution encouraging responsible tree removal. I sent some apprehension today to address it and give a fair shot to DT to come in and plead their case and kind of explain what their, what the program is. But I am still in support of the resolution, and hopefully, it'll pass next time we take this up. Thank you.
Aaron?
I drove by Fountain Park, Baker Park this weekend, and there was a couple out there in front of the big hydrangeas having their wedding pictures taken. He was in full military uniform, and she was in a beautiful dress, and-
Cool.
It was nice to see that, that, that they wanted their pictures taken there. I mean, you think it's a busy corner street there with the traffic and stuff going by, and, you know, they were standing out there by all those beautiful hydrangeas that the, it's the garden club, right?
Mm-hmm.
That the garden club does, and that's, I mean, those are their forever pictures. It was really nice.
That was a, I mean, that park has been looking just sparklingly nice.
It has been. It has been.
Very pretty.
And I thought that that was, it's a nice asset. You know, you don't think like they're taking the picture this way, and you don't think that there's all that traffic this way, you know? So, I just wanted to, I know there's a big event there, and I know they've been working on it, but it was utilized well this weekend, and they did have a nice day. They did, they had a great day, and like I said, those are their forever pictures. They're right here in town. It's kind of nice. I'm not even a wedding person, and I thought it was nice.
Glenn?
I'm just looking forward to the inside-out business with DIA. So, I, I had a different number, or date that I thought I had seen, so I'm glad that you made me clear on that.
It's Tuesday, the August 11th.
Yeah, right. I had it on a Tuesday, but I think it was the week before or something.
It's a black tie event. Just so you know.
That'll be real fun, though.
I'll go.
See, our city's going to really be looking nice with all that stuff out there. So, that's all I have.
Okay, great. I'm in agreement with Joe. I already planned on bringing it up, but he brought it up as well. I believe that we should be tearing down 390 Lafayette Building. That is not a salvageable building. I've had many contractors, three of them, state, they've been in there and said, forget it. It's ridiculous. It's full of black mold. It's, it's cracking everywhere. You've got the back wall ready to cave in. The ceilings are caving in. It's not salvageable. I don't think we need to be in a business of hanging on to something like that till maybe somebody would want it, and then find out, wow, they don't want to deal with it. And then what do you do? It's still sitting there. It's an eyesore. It's detrimental to our community. I think for the time, we're not saying that we can't sell it to somebody to build something there, maybe along the lines of the new ordinance that we were talking about putting in that area. We can have, for the meantime, it can still be parking area that would benefit active faith down the street. It can also have a few picnic tables there, and both Wendy's and Browns, people can go over there and use that. It can be a little pocket park until if it was a viable business, wanted to do something with it. But salvaging that building, I am totally against it. Again, we don't gain a dime by keeping it, and we don't lose a dime by knocking it down. In fact, I would like to see that on a discussion for the next meeting.
I can put that on discussion for the next meeting. You signed the document for the purchase agreement for the county right before the meeting, so we should have all the finalized paperwork by then. So, what I can do is put it out for bid for demolition between now and then.
Okay.
I want to discuss this before we do that.
Then we have, I'm talking. That's why I said, put it on for discussion. That's exactly what I said.
She's talking about getting a demolition permit. Geez.
I also wanted to like to have on the agenda, discussion upon a trail as known as Lafayette Street through town. It's hideous. It's got potholes popping up. There's, there's some really major ones right there in front of the Marathon Gas Station, among the crevices that are developing, and it's just not even safe for a bike to go crossing the road. I think that we need to do something with that. And then we have, as far as, you mentioned the wedding. Excuse me. Aaron, I was talking to you regarding the wedding you saw. I did one the previous week there, and it was really a wonderful event for them. It had a train stop, and all these people on the ring road right there were stopped for quite a long time. They were all whooping and hollering and cheering on the married couple, and it was really a fun thing, and they were enjoying it, too. They thought that was really cool, as it turned out that they, so it has been a nice setting. I have done several weddings in that.
Okay, it's really nice.
So, Bob, question. The road safety lines, crosswalks and so forth? We've not updated those in quite a while. I just wondered if it was in your plans.
It is. You saw the yellow lines down Nine Mile, McMunn, McCady. It's all part of that contract. They need to come back and finish those, Ted.
Okay. I had a discussion with Kristen Delaney. I was at her family restaurant, actually, and she came over to make a point to talk to me. She says, I want you to understand, I left, the reasons I left had nothing to do with any negativity going on in City Hall, that she thought that she had a great relationship with the city clerk, but it was not a case of her feeling that she had to get squeezed out. She really had a nice opportunity to go do a different job, and that's why she went.
The city clerk?
I said city clerk, I meant the manager. And I want to thank the DPW for placing a plaque at the, at the tree dedication tree in Baker Park that you did place there. It was a wonderful job, the way you did it. And the heritage event that they had at McCady Park, unfortunately, bad weather, hot weather, stormy weather, clashing with the All-Stars going on up on the hill, where they got fifteen hundred kids in their All-Star Games. Then you had the Summer Fest going on at the same time, and I'm sorry that they just didn't have a great turnout at their event, and it's just one of those things that happens. And it was an unfortunate thing for the historical society to have to deal with. I applaud their wanting to put this on and everything, but it just, the logistics, it all fell apart, in my estimation.
I hope they still do it next year. It's a lot of work, and it actually blows up, though.
With that, I'd like to have a call for an adjournment.
I'm a wager.
I'll support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That ends our meeting, an hour and fifty minutes.